joining in standing for the political leaders. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I normally don't start meetings, but this is a reorganization meeting at the school board and so until I elect a chair, I usually conduct the proceedings. Two things I want to note, welcome to Casey, our new board member. And we had a request from Maria Brown to be able to join the meeting remotely. So if the board would like to do that, I need a motion to do so.
So my concern is that the last time we did remote is it delayed everything. And we ended up, we couldn't get in touch with her and we had to do it over the phone.
So it's more difficult?
Yeah. Is there, is there a reason why she can't make the meeting?
She indicated she was ill.
Oh then, I mean, it's just not feeling good. I don't think we should bother her.
Hmm, agree.
So everybody in agreement? Do you have to let her know or?
Yeah, I can, um.
If you can.
You don't want us to sit up here with us?
Close any of them.
We could move just a little.
Sure.
Yes.
Hi, what's up? So the first, um, item on the agenda is to appoint a board chair. So I'd like to call for nominations for a chair.
Yeah, nomination for Jen Hubbard. It's her last year, so get back into the role.
Is there a second to that nomination? Seeing none?
No second.
Are there any other nominations?
I would like to nominate Michelle Knowles for chair of the Seaver School Board.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Are there any other nominations?
Um, I'd nominate Lacy Fowler. Oh, come on, don't second.
Second, I'll second.
Oh, really? Oh, you're making my fun. You've just been here a little bit longer than Michelle. I know, I just got a lot on me, I just during too much. But you're the longest and I think.
We all nominate right.
I'm with you.
Alright, can I squeeze my kiss for Michelle?
Are there any other nominations?
Who made the nomination for Jen? Maria, Maria.
No second.
So I have nominations for Michelle and Lacy that have been made and seconded. Is there, are there, is there any discussion on the nominations?
So I think Michelle would be a great chairperson. I don't mind being vice chair. I just really, I don't want to be chair if I cannot do it in the capacity that I feel like I should do it. Um, I don't like to have go at anything, so Michelle's done it before. She was great at it years ago when you were on the board. Um, I know you have your hands full too, but, but you've been here, you know, you're, you're good for it, so that's why I think Michelle. And I don't mind being vice chair, I don't mind picking up the slack, but to do, to be the chairperson and put the time in, I just, I wouldn't.
But you have a lot of meetings besides.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't have a problem with that.
None of you have discussion? I just wanted to say, Lacy, because you've been here the last 12 months and there's been a lot that we've done. And I think throwing somebody new into the chair with everything we got going is going to be very difficult. I'll tell you what, it's very time consuming. I agree. But I also think that it should be somebody that has been involved in the past year, but that's just my opinion.
Well, thank you, Maria, I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Any other discussions? Seeing none, all in favor of the nomination for Michelle Knowles to serve as chair. Alright, please. One, two, three.
Do I vote myself?
Yeah. Opposed, abstaining. So I saw three yes votes for Michelle, all in favor of the nomination for Lacy Fowler to serve as chair.
I am in favor.
Opposed, abstaining.
Obstain.
Okay, well, Michelle, congratulations.
Really?
For now, the chair.
Thank you.
Hey, can I just say something too before we go off, that I just heard that moving forward, that everybody on the board is respected and listened to and not, um, in a rut yet, so it's a tough job, but I expect all the board members to be included and treated fairly moving forward. That's fine.
So it's your meeting now, so you get to call for nominations for board or vice chair.
Oh, okay. So I need nomination for a vice chair. I would like to nominate Lacy Fowler, I mean.
Yeah, that's, that's mine.
I'll second. All those in favor?
Yes, I guess.
Yes. Now, school board committee appointments?
So can I, so I did a lot of these last year. I think I was the head of three committees.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, or four, because I was on the withdrawal committee as well. Um, sucked the life out of me, so just to be completely honest, I, I would love to keep, um, the facilities committee. If that's okay with everybody, um.
Is that the operations committee?
No, facilities, it's down there.
No, no, no. Facilities.
Just because I, I was policy committee, facilities committee, and then I was also on the communications committee.
Just so you repeat what you are asking to stay on.
I would like to stay on this, definitely stay on facilities committee.
Alright.
Um, and the communications committee. I don't see that on there.
The OC?
SAU commu.
Oh, the new one.
Okay, yeah.
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 That's the new one, that's why.
Yeah, yeah, and I, I join that by default after a joint board meeting and I really enjoy it. We're doing a lot of great things and I kind of want to stay on it and keep the momentum going.
I want to hear about that, because I haven't heard anything.
No, it's amazing, her, uh, me and the other women from, um, the other districts, North Hampton, Southampton, when it comes at Hampton Falls, um, are doing great things to bring our communities together. And to get kids from our communities familiar with the other communities, so that there's a lot more, um, cohesiveness going on before they get to high school, so, um.
Well, I look forward to hearing about that at the meeting, so we all know what's going on, because it's good.
Yeah, definitely, yeah, I'm sure. We send out, um, uh, flyers.
Yep.
I mean, like done quarterly, yeah, we're signing it quarterly.
Yeah.
It's part.
Because I know what's, you know.
It's, it's really good, the ball's getting, getting started and, um, we're, we're working really hard to, to get these communities to kind of mend together.
So anybody would like to make a motion for Lacy to?
Oh, yeah.
You can do them all together.
Oh, you're welcome.
Oh, okay.
And then I'll put me on stipend, if that's okay.
We should probably start with everyone.
We should probably start from the top and.
Yeah, SAU operations committee.
Sorry, I was, yeah. I mean, I'm already on it, except, I don't mind staying on, except for you guys, if anybody. Okay. Yeah, I don't mind keeping that.
Okay, so we'll keep Jen Hubbard on SAU operations committee.
Mm-hmm.
And then alternate for the alter, um, SAU operations committee?
Thinking of it.
Casey. Next is the SAU policy committee. Is that for me?
From when I was on. That's the ones where you covered, I was on, you covered for me the last meeting, yeah.
For Lacy. Okay. I can s, I'll stay on that one.
And I can, I don't mind being the alternate for that.
And Lacy alternate. And then SAU communications committee, which is Lacy.
That's Lacy.
Yep.
And then alternate? Is there an alternate for that?
That can be. It's not listed, but it, there can be.
Yeah, it's not listed.
Um, Casey, I think you would be a great alternate for that.
Yeah.
Um, just because I, I call you a lot for PTO stuff, for information, I feel like it'd be good.
Okay, so we'll add an alternate for the communications committee, that's Casey. And next is facilities committee, which is Lacy.
Lacy.
Mm-hmm.
And then facilities committee alternate? Anybody?
What exactly is the facilities committee? What do they do? So we meet with Colleen and Tim, um, and, uh, Peter Mora, who's the head of facilities here, and we talk over like their budget and, um, we talk over Owen Matt as well, um, Matt kind of heads it, but we talk about like the boilers, um.
Capital.
Yeah, stuff like that. Okay, and they meet during the day, right? So I can't, you wouldn't be able to do that? No, we, we met at like four thirty in the, uh, little meeting room out there.
We, we can accommodate your schedule.
Oh, yeah.
I can all, uh, if you want, because day or night doesn't matter to me, I can flex it.
Yeah. Yeah. You want to take that?
Alright, so Maria's the alternate for the facilities committee?
Yeah.
And then BudCon?
That's a little jungle.
I.
Yeah.
That's, that's a fun one, guys.
Yeah.
Absolutely not.
Yeah, that's a tough, that's a.
Can I, I mean, I was on BudCon previous, when I was on school board.
A lot. We, we've had people that have worked for the town, like Kelly was our, our representative last year.
Yeah. So it would be a conflict or anything, just on my budget?
I don't think so. No, I don't believe so, you just can't do your budget, yeah.
Yeah, okay. I'll do the BudCon. And then we need an alternate for budget committee.
I can do it.
Did you say, Casey?
I can do it.
Okay.
And then do you want me to take the other one that you have now? That's a little bit.
Um. Do you mean the NS, NH, SBA delegate?
Oh, uh, I don't think it's that one.
What, what does that consist of?
It's one meeting a year, typically in October on a Saturday, um, where you go to vote on essentially the platform for the school board association. Alright.
It was on the line, oh, yeah, you can have it, definitely.
So Casey? Be on that, and the alternate?
I'll be the alternate.
Lacy? And then wellness?
That's the one I was talking about.
I think I was on that one, but I haven't done it now, because it's like four times a year.
It's during the day, which, no, we're so much.
Um, okay.
So. Not back or up, if that's alright? For wellness, was that Casey?
Yeah, you see, and Maria is the alt. Maria said she would do extracurricular stipends.
If that's okay, whatever, guys.
Mm-hmm. Yep, what does that consist of?
Once a year, and that I know of, so far. With the union and, um, some staff.
Alright, and then, alright, so we'll put Maria on the stipends, and then alternate for the stipends?
You can stay on that.
Okay. Jen, alternate.
Okay.
Almost there, one more. Whatever you do.
I think we don't have to do it.
That's it.
Are you all set?
Yep.
Denise? Okay.
We just need a motion. So the motion's going to be for all committee appointments that you just made, and then I'll put them in there.
Okay. Okay, I motion to approve, um, all the committee appointments. I'll just name, I'll say.
Second. Casey, second? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. Alright, so now we open public comment, four forty-five. Is there any public comment as of right now? Yeah, state your names and your address.
My name is Leah Brown. I live at one eighteen.
Can you pull the microphone down, yeah, so we can hear you, they, um, thank you.
My name's Leah Brown, I live at one eighteen Cimarron Drive. I am here about the policies in pretty much the middle school about harassment and bullying. I want to know what can be done, what can be changed, because I have two middle schoolers that are terrified of the school. And nothing seems to be able to be done. Um, it's really getting out of hand. I, one of my kids is out of school right now and in the program. I've been in touch with the school officer, there's been police reports made. Um, but it's been sent to juvenile court where it won't be touched. They've made threats of bodily harm on my daughter, both my daughters. And I've been told consequences are going to be made, and this girl seems to still be in school. Um, she's on the same bus as my kids, tells my kids they have to move. Um, since I've moved here, my kids have gone nothing but harassed. Um, I go to the superintendent, nothing, nothing changes. It, it really sucks, it seems like Kelly was really the only one that really enforced things towards the administrative team. So I, I really don't know where I'm at now, I, but something needs to be changed before somebody gets hurt in this, a student gets hurt in the school. I, so this is where I'm at. I've gone to the state reps, I've gone to the police department. My daughter was sexually assaulted on the school bus two years ago, and nothing. Been told that these students are going to be kept away from my kids, and they're not. They get followed. I printed out thirteen pages of text messages of my kid being harassed, being told she was going to be humbled. But it wasn't looked at that, like that, in the school. I, I can't homeschool, it doesn't work, I'm looking into charter schools at this point. I, what, what are we going to do to make these kids safe? Because, I mean, I, what answers do you have for me? Because clearly the, the school has nothing for me. That's, that's what I want to know, because my kids aren't safe in this school, so I, I need to know before somebody really hurts my kids, because then I'm, I'm angry. And nobody is doing anything for these kids, nobody. My kids are coming home daily saying howl, oh, yep, this one was in a fight, oh, yep, this one was in a fight. The kids, some, the kid that sexually assaulted my daughter was suspended for half a day. Sometime, but this is, with this situation now, it's, they'll get suspended for a day, but in the handbook, which I have read front to back, if it's a continuous thing, it's supposed to be more and more of a discipline action. And nothing. I know I can't be told about the disciplines, which I don't want to know, I don't, I truly don't care. What I care about is my kids' safety, which isn't being taken serious. I get in contact with the school and it takes sometimes days to get here back. I, you know, I mean, I was supposed to hear back today, but I, a budget meeting was taken over. I, I have to have my kids take their phones to school so that they can call me from the bathroom if they're being harassed. I mean, sometimes the cameras aren't working, or, well, they said they didn't do it, so, so it just kind of gets let go. So do I have to literally just take my kids out of school for the rest of the year and have them do nothing, because I can't do the online schooling? Because we've done that route, their old school, they went through the same thing. They were getting beaten on in their, their old school, and now we come to this school. The only thing my sixth grader has going for her is her caseworker does wonders for her. My kids both have PTSD. My sixth grader not from the school, but my eighth grader has PTSD from this school. So what are we doing? How are we going to fix this problem?
So Leah, public comment isn't typically something that the board responds to?
But I will.
Yeah.
But I will, but thank you for being brave and standing up, and this is not, you're not the first. We hear this all throughout the community, and it is our board's responsibility to oversee the administration and make sure that this does not happen. Kids belong in school, they belong here, and I hope you just consider keep in view that we do things differently to help all kids. You're not the only one, you're just the brave one that dared to stand up there and say it, and kudos to you.
Thank you. My kids are my everything, and I will do whatever it takes to protect them, and their mental health is going quite literally to crap. And I, at this point, my hands are tied, I mean, all the people that are supposed to protect them, when they're not with me, don't, the, the Seaver police don't help them. The school's not protecting them. So I, my eighth grader doesn't trust anybody, doesn't trust the school. I mean, literally when this last situation happened, when I said something about protecting them, they said, well, the best, one of the staff members told me the best we can do to protect them at this time is to encourage them to tell a teacher. That is not what I want to hear, that you're going to do to protect my kids. That is not okay, because that's not protection. Protection, make sure that your cameras are working, make sure that you're keeping the, the, these kids that are threatening bodily harm on my children away from my children. It's not, I, I know I keep repeating myself, but something has to be done.
Uh, I don't mean to interrupt you, Leah, um, is this something that we can handle tonight in a non-public? Because I don't feel for, for your students or for us to have this conversation in a public meeting about your children, but maybe that's something that we can handle tonight if, in a non-public, to talk about this specific situation that you're bringing up?
I'll handle that.
In that way, because we're not, so that we're not pushing it off, if you want to hang out until a non-public and we can discuss what's going on, address the issue? If that works for tonight, and we can create something moving forward?
That's fine with me.
Okay, because safety is the number one priority, because if kids don't feel safe, then they can't learn.
Right.
So, okay.
Yeah.
I just wanted to know if I would get aware of what was going on in the school also, I.
Yeah.
Right. No, and I, I appreciate it, and I.
You have to advocate for your child, I mean.
You're a mom. Right.
Yeah. I mean, me and my kids in the, hanging out in the bathroom saying, please pick me up, please pick me up, I'm scared, I'm scared, and that's, that's not okay. Like, it's not okay. It kills me, like, that's.
Oh, breaks my heart.
I mean, even my first grader is scared on the bus, because this girl will harass them on the bus, and.
Do you mind if the board, um, I know we got a lot going on, but if we have to move out non-public to, to listen to or not make or wait till the end, we can, if the board decides?
I don't mind waiting.
You don't have?
I, yeah.
Thank you, Leah, I'm on to it.
Thank you.
I don't think that's too much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Uh, George Casham, Ten Austin's Way. Uh, so, as, uh, just being a numbers person, I tend to look at the expenditure and the revenue reports that, that's posted on board docs every month during meetings. And, um, one of the items that I've been kind of closely following, just because it seems to be the largest percentage used, is under school board services, legal. Um, now, I don't know clarity on what that means, Matt, I don't know if you can kind of elaborate on it, but is that legal fees solely incurred by the school board?
Are you okay with me?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I don't mind explaining either, but you go ahead and I will.
So that would be for any, um, any legal expenditures, um, that are required, general counsel for the school. So it's not just the school board, that could be, um, you know, the, the administration seeking legal counsel. There's a separate line item that is, um, specific to special education.
Yeah, I saw that.
That is separate.
Um, okay, this might change the discussion a little bit, but, um, maybe, is it on the revenue report, it's, or on the expenditure report itself? That would, that could be clarified a little bit, because it's labeled under school board services, so it kind of leads to think that it's by the school board. That's where, um, because it's. Right, right, but even if there's clarity or notes or footnotes to it, to kind of elaborate on what it is, it just seems, I mean, my discussion will still be about the cost, because it's very high and I'd like to address it, but, um, you know, I, I interpret it in a different way, kind of leading into this conversation. Um, so, I pulled the report from March thirteenth, that was ran, generated on March thirteenth, twenty twenty-five. And it says legal fees, uh, for the budget of eight thousand dollars and year-to-date, so fiscal year July first until March thirteenth, thirty thousand dollars, nine hundred, thirty thousand, nine hundred and seventy-five dollars and seventy-eight cents. Uh, there was a revised budget of thirteen thousand, nine twenty, so it says it's two hundred and ninety-two and a half percent over budget, but if you go off of the original, it's actually three hundred, uh, two hundred and ninety-three percent over budget. Um, so when I look back to year over year, just to kind of look at comparisons, I went back to twenty twenty, so, and again, this is the fiscal year, so July first to June thirtieth, twenty twenty, twenty-one, we spent two thousand, one hundred and fifteen dollars on a seventy-five hundred dollar budget. Twenty-one to twenty-two, five thousand, forty-seven on a seventy-five hundred dollar budget. Twenty-two, twenty-three, four thousand, nine fifty-six on a seventy-five hundred dollar budget. And then in twenty-three, twenty-four, we spent sixteen thousand, three fifty-two on a fifty-five hundred dollar budget, which is two hundred and ninety percent over budget. But from July to March, we spent five hundred, five thousand, four hundred and forty, so we were under budget. And then since the election of last year, so April twenty-four to June twenty-four, ten thousand, nine hundred and twelve dollars. So two months, ten thousand dollars, and then taking this year, the thirty thousand, nine seventy-five, in a year, we've spent forty-one thousand, eight hundred and eighty-seven dollars on legal fees. So it brought me to do a right to know, to kind of inquire where these legal fees might be coming from, and obviously I don't, I'm not privy to the line-by-line items, but, um, I know back in August, there was a meeting about seeking new legal counsel, and, um, I know I had asked if this is going to cost us more money, and I think someone else specifically asked how much is the new lawyer going to cost? And, um, you know, we were told that the lawyer, the new lawyer would, would not be, would not cost more money than what we're paying today. So I received a invoice from Casassa Law Office, um, just a bill of what he charged, and it was a hundred and eighty-five dollars per hour. I also received some other ones, they're attorneys I'm not familiar with, but I'm happy to read them off. Drummond Woodson, three hundred and twenty dollars an hour. Their paralegal is one seventy-five an hour, so their paralegal is ten dollars less per hour than our previous attorney. Um, Soul Leslie Kidder, Sayward, and Loftman, two hundred and eighty-five dollars and ninety-three cents an hour. Uh, Upton and Hatfield, two hundred, there were two attorneys, it looks like, although I can't, but two different rates, two hundred and eighty-five dollars an hour and two oh five dollars an hour. Um, then I also received a invoice for Norman Hingham, PA, and I believe that's Michelle Hingham's, um, law practice. Oh, sorry, Maureen Hingham, excuse me, and she, this invoice was twenty-one point nine hours, charging a total of eight thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars and fifty cents. I'm just doing simple math, but total divided by the hours comes out to three hundred and ninety-five dollars an hour. So we hired an attorney, that's more than double what our previous attorney was, and that's more than, not just a little bit more, a lot more. Now, this specific bill that I got was for eight thousand dollars, and we already paid her another two thousand dollar bill, so, I'm sorry, eighty-seven hundred and twenty-one hundred. So that's eleven thousand dollars of the thirty thousand that was, that was charged to Ms. Hingham and at a rate of three hundred and ninety-five dollars an hour. So we're in a environment where costs are everything, everything's scrutinized, everything's getting, um, things are not getting passed, because people are worried about how much things cost. I'd like to know what we can do to try to control this, because, I don't know, three hundred and ninety-five dollars an hour compared to one eighty-five seems out of control.
So George, I just want to, while you're standing there, we have, um, uh, there's more attorneys in that other way, because we have special education attorneys, slews, um, we have regular ad, we have, um, just, I'm just going to throw this out there, say this again, that we have no choice to have. That could cost up to ten thousand dollars for one year, for a student, just so you know. Um, we cannot control when we need legal or when we don't, unfortunately, what we can do is, um, just be really cautious with the whole budget this year, because we're going to default for the second year in a row. But as far as legal, and Cassie will probably be able to share a little bit, you know, she's a member.
Casey, her name is Casey. Her name is Casey Maria, it's my five minutes, her name is Casey.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, Casey. So she can probably help you out, but as far as us not using legal, we wouldn't be able to do it. Those things we have to have, but, and the other thing with the one eighty-five to the three eighty, I think all, because I kind of look, because Lacey kind of shared this with the board too. Um, I look, and the average cost of an attorney for education is anywhere from two eighty to three eighty. It's really a lot of money.
So you hired the person that's on the highest end of that range?
I don't think that's right, three ninety-five and a lot of.
I, I could show you my map.
Yeah, I don't think it's correct, but even so, we hired who we needed.
So, I don't mean to cut you off, Maria, it is correct, because someone had brought that to my attention. So I started, I started asking Matt questions, I did an email, which it, it had included all the board. Casey wasn't a part of it yet, because you weren't elected yet. Um, but, which can be printed out for everybody, but I had questioned our, our, basically what you're questioning, and how did we get to this point? Um, and then I shared that we needed, I wanted to know what she made an hour, because one board member signed off on it, and Maria said she didn't see it, I didn't see it. And so I was unaware that we were being charged three hundred and ninety-five dollars an hour until I requested that information. We, there are things that are out of our control for legal, that we have to have legal representation, representation for, but there are a lot of things that legal does not need to be a part of, um, that we can use sparingly. And I think that's, um, something that needs to be done, because just for her to review an email, like, I know Bob did this in the past, but if we send them an email, or if we CC them on email, they review an email, they have to write back to us, they have to investigate, and that costs money. So I think there are things, some things in our control that we can do, so that we are not wrapping up a, a bill, um, unnecessarily. Obviously, we do need legal, we run into things all the time that unfortunately, we just can't get away without legal, but we, it, it is three ninety-five an hour. I had Matt send me the sheet, I want to be a hundred percent transparent. I don't know if you have that when you did your ninety-one A, but we have that.
No, I just had an invoice with all the line items blanked out, so all I saw was the total hours minus the thing.
Yes.
And I'm sorry, they also charge mileage too. This attorney that's higher than all of them charges mileage on top of it.
Yeah. And I, when I asked questions, and Matt sent that to me, that's when I realized it was three ninety-five.
Yeah.
And I think I was the one that opened my mouth and put my foot in it, when I said that we were gonna hire someone that would be at a similar rate, because that was the intention. And I'll just be the one to say it, if I'm wrong, I'll let you know.
And I just want to piggyback on what Lacey said, and I'm in defense for the person that's not here. Um, there was no one person, we all sat in with, not meeting with legal, with the attorney, who were very well aware of what we needed and what we didn't need. And the go-ahead for that person to sign was given by the school board to, um, have her be the representative for legal. So I just don't want someone thinking somebody just went and signed something. That wasn't the case, the board actually made her the rep for that. And the other thing I want to say is, we were in a situation where the SAU twenty-one and the Seabrook School Board had the same attorney representing both of us, and as we all know, attorneys cannot do that. So that was another reason we were kind of caught in a pickle of who, who represents who, and we needed representation, and he represented the SAU. So I, there's a lot of, lot of things that, um, mounted up to where we are today, but hopefully, moving forward, we can make things, um, less money on all accounts and not just on one, because we definitely need to work on it.
Yeah, uh, fiscal responsibility is really what I'm looking for here. Um, transparency too, there was one more thing I wanted to add. On one of these invoices, um, the email was billed to a personal email address, not an SAU address. That makes me wonder if stuff that is being communicated, that we're eligible to know via right-to-know is not being shared, because it's being done via private email addresses? I don't find that appropriate.
Yeah.
I feel like SAU email addresses should be used. It, it's a person that's no longer here, so I don't want to, um, target them, but this invoice from Upton and Hatfield was emailed to a Gmail account.
And, and in defense of that person that isn't here that you're alluding to, there were, there was a situation where there was not too much trust in the SAU twenty-one email at the time, and until we had our own attorney, and Meredith can kind of piggyback, because she had, they had Bob.
Could you tell me when you hired, can you tell me when you hired your attorney?
No, but you can get that information from, um.
And that was more, and that was, um, Maureen, uh, Ms. Hingham, right?
No, there's two different ones, you're talking Upton and Hatfield, and you're talking Maureen.
Excuse me, I'm Bruce, can you call one-ten?
And you're talking, you're talking a few different attorneys, I'm not sure who those other attorneys are.
Yeah.
So you can get it from that, I don't know who they are.
I just, the meeting of seeking new legal counsel was in August, and this invoice is from November sixth, so, seeking, the trust and seeking, I mean, you, it's now been, it was three months later.
I'm not sure when she started, to be honest, I'd have to look back, I'm not positive.
Um, September eighteenth, twenty twenty-four.
September eighteenth?
Is when you hired your new legal counsel?
Is when it, the disagreement, uh, sorry, um, September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four is when it was finally.
So you seeked your new legal counsel, and then in November, using a personal email address to communicate. Again, I just don't think from the taxpayers, that's very transparent. I think one of your goals is, talks about transparency. I think it's important we keep that transparency, especially when that bill is as high as it is. And, and I'm not even sure how this works, but, and maybe, Matt, you can share, but where do the extra funds come from? Like, how does it get paid for?
So, um, so if, if a account goes over budget, then that means another account needs to have a corresponding, um, that needs to go under budget, but I don't know. So, um, it's a bottom-line budget, so as long as our overall budget doesn't go over, then, um, then that's, you know, that's, that's okay, uh, but obviously, other areas of school operations suffer. I'll also note Drummond Woodson is the special education attorney that, 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 um, you referenced. Uh, however, I do know that we were charged, um, I, I, both by Drummond Woodson and Upton and Hatfield, um, for the board reaching out initially, I think you did some work with Upton and Hatfield.
And Kidder, I don't know who that is.
And Leslie Kidder, um, I mean, in re, in reality, I mean, we, um, we were, um, weren't allowed to contact legal for most of this year, so the bulk of the charges were from the board. That being said, that account could be from either the administration or the board.
Since I've been on the board, I've seen a lot of, or, um, a lot of emails and emergency meetings and so on, and I feel like it's definitely, um, utilizing the legal to an extent that is unacceptable.
Um, thank you, and, and I guess I could, thanks, Matt, for the information too. So, I guess I'll just tap, I'll finish off by saying, to cover these costs, someone else is losing out. Again, we don't know it's a bottom line, but if that's the special education fund, if that's the general education fund, if that's staffing of teachers, we are now having to take away from something that the students need, and it'd be nice to not do that, as they're already working on default budgets as it is. Thank you.
Yep, and I'm just gonna go back to George back on what Michelle said. Um, unacceptable is, um, a little harsh with this board, because I think this board, twenty-two meetings later for a year, did everything that they needed to do. And where we are today, hopefully, moving forward, or we can keep rehashing the bat, but I hope we go forward from here, and we don't need so much. We'll see.
Yeah, I don't think we will.
Well, hopefully not, Michelle, but if it's a kid issue, you've got no choice, and neither do I. So, I'm hoping.
It wasn't a kid issue, but let's go forward. Um, we still got five more minutes of public comment.
Hi, everyone. Samantha Magnarelli, I live at one ninety-eight South Queen Street. Um, I'm just coming to say that I'd like to talk about the budget, and we have a lot of work to do with the budget, because unfortunately, people in this town are upset with the school, with the town, with everything. Um, and it's unfortunate that the budget did pass, and I wish it did. I know I wrote an email, the majority of you did got my email regarding the cutting of the first grade teacher, um, that impacts my students and a lot of other students. I hope that when you're going through the budget, yes, obviously, you guys are there for the taxpayers, but really take a look at what you're gonna do to the students that we have in our school, because I know there's gonna be cuts and there's gonna be a lot of repercussions for a lot of things that have to happen. I know you're looking at buses too, because I drive a bus, and I was asked to get my numbers. I just want to let you guys know that as a bus driver, um, I was all for cutting buses last year, we did have the drivers, the buses were combined. This year, I don't think that the numbers that you bought were really accurate, because we were told on a Friday to start getting numbers for two days, and this is a longer time, period of time, would be a more accurate number of how many kids are on a bus. But this year, with cutting the two buses last year and our principals, we really have gotten a smoother ride to and from school, and my concern is that condensing the buses even more, we have three that are full. Maybe not to the eighty-three, but they're, they're full, so condensing the buses even more, my concern would be to lead to more problems that we would have on the buses and longer rides for the kids.
So, do you have a person on the bus anymore? Do they do that?
No, no, we don't have a monitor, I've never had a monitor, that was of one particular, or two particular buses.
Because it's so, it's not much money, and it probably is not a bad idea for you guys. I just feel like.
I, I'm all for monitors if you think you need them. I think that our administration has been amazing. If I have an issue with any student, I pull around to the front, if it's in middle school, um, or elementary school, and Colleen is on the bus taking care of it. So I, I do have a few students that do have their own seats, um, so that also comes into play. I know I'm not the only bus that has that, but some kids just, they can't ride with other kids, they can't be in the back, they have to be where I can see them. Um, but they really worked hard to nip the majority of the issues we have on the bus. Of course, you're gonna have issues on the bus, but where we're seeing them are the buses that are at capacity, bus eleven, she has a full bus, bus six has a full bus, bus, um, five has a full bus. So, where you're gonna see issues, you're gonna see issues on those full buses, but they're working really, they've worked really hard. I, I don't have any complaints. I, she comes on my bus once, and, and it's, it's dealt with, so we're not having the issues that we were having before, but I am concerned, depending on cutting the buses, if you are gonna cut buses, that that may play a role again, because the more kids you cram on there, and they're bigger, kids are bigger nowadays. I mean, I have middle schoolers that can't sit two to a seat, because their legs have to be in the aisle, because their legs are so long that they don't fit comfortably on the bus with their backpacks and everything else that they bring.
Can I just, you.
And I would like to address the, um, first grade, I did have that on my list here, because I did, we did receive quite a bit of, um, information from people, and I would like to discuss that with the administration and the superintendent to see what we can do there on the, uh, first grade versus moving a teacher or, you know, I know the interventionist didn't pass, and we're in a default budget, but it is definitely a discussion that I would like to have, because I take it concerns, I'm not in the school.
Right.
You know, and.
I appreciate that, because I think our, our kindergarten class is small right now, but they're really getting so much out of their education, and they're really building that foundation that they need, so then to throw them into a larger class with potentially adding more kids next year that are, are gonna move here and rent the apartments, and we have other things, other properties being built too, it just is really gonna throw them off, like, give them, I think they're getting a great education right now, they're getting a great foundation, and just let that continue. Just a little, six years old is hard to have fifteen to eighteen kids in a class, it's too much. I appreciate that.
I appreciate you letting us know, because we're not in the school, and so we really, we really love to hear feedback from teachers and bus drivers and parents and everything, to know what's going on, as well as obviously, our administrators, but you guys kind of just give a different, different spin to everything.
Yeah, everyone has a different view, probably, and I'm coming up as a, as a parent, and my little bus driver.
Yeah.
But, I'm, as a parent, like, obviously, I'm concerned about my kids, but all, all of the other children too. You want, we want, we want our school to, to do better, we want our students to do better, and I don't think that removing a teacher is in the best interest of them. Maybe at the end of the day, our pockets, but in the best interest of our students, no.
Thank you, Sam.
I just wanted to, um, say something to you, so last year, we were on default budget. We had all those scary cuts, and it brought a room full of people, and I can tell you, the budget's been fine. We had no problem working off that three hundred thousand dollar cut, and I honestly feel the same is gonna be this year. I don't think it's gonna be a big deal, and I think, for me, I won't sit here and accept that a teacher needs to be cut, I don't care what grade it is. Our academics show, we need teachers, we don't need less teachers in bigger classrooms, we need to keep the teachers we have and not look at cutting or moving teachers somewhere else. It's just not right.
Thank you, thank you, guys.
Thank you, Sam.
Thank you. Any other public comment? I know we're just about, we're over a couple of minutes, but is there anything, anybody else?
Okay, sure. Pierre Brecher, hi, my name is Rachel Tark, I have a couple of kids in school, my kindergartner, um, so I just want to say, because she's making me now, thank you, I appreciate you guys looking at the first grade teacher. I know I did email about that as well, um, so I appreciate you guys taking the time to look at that and see if there's something that can be done. It just, it's, it'd be unfortunate for one class to have to do that every single year, watching kids come into the school and having a big class. I don't know how they do that already without somebody in the classroom all day, because six years old is quite an age. So, thank you guys for looking at that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rachel.
All right. No one else, I'm gonna close public comment at five seventeen. And we'll move on to the minutes.
So I will make a motion to approve the minutes from the January twenty-first regular meeting?
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by, motion made by Lacey, seconded by Jen, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can you say Jen?
Yeah, abstain, Joe. Before, I looked before I came here, but.
Maria?
Abstain, Joe.
So I have Jen, Lacey, and Michelle, yes?
Yes.
And Maria and Casey abstain?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, I would like, let me know if you need more time. I'm still, uh, uh, motion, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the January twenty-fourth special meeting. Will second.
All right, we have a motion from Lacey, a second by Jen, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any extensions?
Yeah, abstain.
To extensions?
Yeah.
Okay, um, oh, I was abstinent this next meeting, so I can't.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of January twenty-seventh, special meeting. I need a second.
I'll second.
Seconded by Jen.
Jen, you are out too.
I know, but I can still second.
Oh, you can, okay, sorry.
Yes. All those in favor? Aye.
Abstain.
Abstain.
Everybody's abstain.
I'm gonna pass, I'm gonna second.
Yeah. But, but that's not gonna change, I mean, you have the authority to approve minutes, even if you were not pressed.
Oh, okay, then yes.
Yeah. I probably had to. But.
That's a lie.
I need to.
I thought you meant to be.
Robert, do the law.
Okay, well, then I change my vote to yes. I watch the. So I have Jen, um, Jen, are you an abstain?
Yes, please.
Lacey, you're a yes?
I'll be a yes, yeah, I watch the.
Maria?
Abstain.
Michelle?
Yes.
So I have two yeses, three abstain.
I can be a yes, and I wasn't actually there, I'm just on up here.
There you go.
And then, let me know when you're ready.
I am ready, thank you.
I will make a motion to approve the minutes from the February nineteenth special meeting. I will second.
All right, motion by Lacey, seconded by Jen, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 So I have Jen, Lacey, Michelle, yes?
Yes.
Maria abstain?
Right.
And Casey?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
All right, moving on to the SAU report, Superintendent?
Sure, just taking it, feels like I wrote this in my. I did, in fact, this is my February report, for some reason, that's not my March report. I'll fill that up too. Um, so I just recapped the legislative roundtable that we held back in February. There'll be another one scheduled for mid to late April, following crossover, when the bill is moved from the House to the Senate and vice versa. Also, I spoke about meeting with the student leadership team, um, we met those. Um, we met both in February and also today. Today the focus was really around technology, um, uh, personal data privacy, um, use of AI. Uh, it was very interesting to speak with students about it and their perspective is always a little bit different than ours as adults. So it's, it's helpful to hear what they're thinking and how they think about the use of these tools. I've referenced back in February, um, we can postpone, but it was school counseling week. Um, and that Dr. Cassidy and I are working on, um, with principals on renewal recommendations for educators, which you will see at your typical meeting.
I have a question. Um, do we have a, or does the SAU have like a calendar of what the school board needs to do on certain months? Like January, like say January is, um, or February, you know?
Budget.
Yeah, budget.
Budget.
Like a synopsis would.
No, but we could put them together for you.
It would keep me in line.
Yep.
Yeah, help people do it better.
Yeah. Anybody else have any questions? All right, SES principal report.
So I just wanted to start off by thanking everyone who came to our student exhibition night. It's our third year having these events and I would say this one was just as busy as any of the other ones that we've had. It was an excellent turnout. I could spend all night thanking all of our partners and families, uh, but really it's truly just a heartwarming evening and it's, it's the stuff. That's the good stuff right there, right? So it was a really good event. And yeah, I, I also just wanted to thank SAS. They, they had added a ice cream table this year and so hopefully every year we'll just keep getting a little bit better. So thank you to everyone who made it out. Girls on the Run, we're excited to announce we have a team, uh, SES and SMS will have a team this year. It's for grades three to five. We have the possibility of having two teams if we get enough interest. At this time, we, we only have about seven or eight packets that have been submitted, but we have a little bit of time left. So putting this out there, um, so you can, we can spread the word. It's a great program for those of you that, that know about it, but I would encourage you to scan that QR code on the board report or just quick Google search about Girls on the Run. This year they're doing the five K on Saturday, uh, May thirty-first at the Loudon Motor Speedway. So it's gonna be a really cool kind of end celebration for them. Right now it's looking like we're gonna have practices two days a week for girls in like two thirty to four. Uh, and again, that's grades three through five. So we have our coaches all lined up. We're just waiting to hopefully get some more registrations and that can be done online or a paper packet. So reach out if you have any questions about that.
I think Jen volunteered to run with them though.
Listen, if you see me running, you run too.
I did that one year with Kaylee and I think I walked the whole thing.
I think too, I got two really important because it's, is it like two hundred dollars per kid? But there is scholarships and encourage people to put in for those because there may be kids that wanna do it, but their parents can't afford that. So put it out there, there's scholarships.
Yeah, thank you for mentioning that. It is usually a much greater cost, but we're looking at about ten dollars per student. And Exeter Hospitals working with Girls on the Run to, to partner to be able to do that. But also our girls will have the opportunity to get a free pair of shoes that they'll get fitted for in their first practice.
Yeah.
Um, that they'll get to, to go home with at the end of the season. So it's a great thing. So we're excited about that. And our, moving along, our professional development day last week was a, a big success, I would say. We, um, kicked off Playworks, so we're excited to, to have that up and running. And we're looking forward to about a month from now, having our recess coach come back to really restructure recess. They've just, it was sort of just a kickoff, so we got a, an understanding of what it's all about and kind of got to be the students. And they sort of let it like the, the teachers and got to do different games. And I think I noticed at least some teachers already implementing some things in their classroom the following day. So that's always a good sign. So definitely a, a good day, uh, last week. And then the last couple of things, we have, um, some important dates coming up. We have our preschool lottery is currently open right now. So the window for that is March thirteenth to April fourth. And step one is really just submitting a Google form. That information is in the, the board report as well. It has been sent home to parents. It's on Facebook, uh, but if you need that information, please reach out. So really if any, anyone interested, if your student is already in preschool, that form does not need to be filled out. Uh, but that window is open right now and the lottery will be held on April sixth, sorry, April ninth. And then the last, last thing coming up is our kindergarten information night is going to be at six o'clock on April fifteenth. Just an opportunity to come meet the kindergarten team, get to see the classrooms, learn about the registration process. Just ask questions and get familiar with what kindergarten looks like at SES, so.
How many children, um, do we have in the preschool, the, the lottery?
Yeah, so the, I don't have the numbers in front of me. I don't know if Christian's in the crowd over there, not to put you on the spot. Um, we can certainly come back with that information because I don't wanna give you the wrong information, but, um. Yeah, it sounds about right.
Eight opening, it's not necessarily.
Is that for retirees?
Right.
Okay.
Is that for both?
Okay.
And I think Tim too, a question on that. I know last year, even though the board said, and the teachers stood up here and spoke and said, you know, we should not be taking two or three-year-old, three-year-olds, I think, before four-year-olds because they need to be prepped when they move into kindergarten. And I unfortunately, I think last year that did happen, just the same, that there were three-year-olds that took spots for four-year-olds. And I hope that doesn't continue because those kids need to be in that program to be ready to go into kindergarten. So if it did, great, if it didn't, great. But I hope we really focus on those four-year-olds before anybody because they need it. And, and I don't want them to be a year behind and waiting either, just, just from this board number. That was a concern.
But the lottery is for kids that need special assistance?
No.
No, that's not true.
Well, there's a mixture.
That's not.
Right, so it would be students that are identified wouldn't have to be submitted into the lottery.
Right.
So it'd be for any, any other student, three or more that isn't identified, those would be the ones that would enter the lottery.
Oh, okay, all right.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jen.
Thank you, Jen.
All right, on to Colleen.
Okay, I was gonna talk about exhibition. I guess I should have talked to you first. I just wanna thank people in the community. It was a great night. We had a lot of, um, you know, donations from Panera's Reds. We had Barnes and Noble come and set up a table just to kind of like, they're a new organization in the community, like to get people to go out to that. Uh, we're really happy with the Alice training we're doing with the students, Officer Duchesne and, um, Officer Keith that are going around to each classroom so that all students hear the information from the same two people. Um, they, we, you know, Josh and I said in the sixth grade one, they ask great questions. It's really information of, um, you know, it doesn't matter whether you're in a school or you're, you're in a library or you're at Walmart, wherever you are, you need to kind of know your surroundings and if you had to shelter in place, what would that look like and to be prepared for that. So I think the kids were dialed in and asked great questions. We'd like to do some training for the parents. We're gonna send out a survey to see what the interest is. You know, we appreciated the chief attending the, um, night that we had. Unfortunately, we had a small turnout, but you know, you could start with four and build to six and build to eight and build to ten. So, um, that's gonna happen in the future. Uh, we're all about voice and choice here. So the student council had a great Valentine dance. We had more food than you could even imagine. So thank you to all the families that donated, um, and they ran it, you know? They facilitated the door, collecting the money, um, deciding what the theme was. So I think whenever you give them the opportunity to kind of say, this is what we want, because they came last year and said, we can only go to the rep. Why don't we have dances here? So they did a great job with that. We appreciate, um, their efforts. And we also gave them some voice and choice with a Fun Flex Friday, which was fun for maybe everybody and maybe a couple, maybe not so much fun. Because maybe they didn't get the choice they wanted. They could game a forum, they could do, uh, eating Legos, read a book. Uh, we wanted to reward them for their efforts on the Niva task because they work hard and they also need to, um, know that we acknowledge and support the work they put in. So while February was a short month, um, we had, we had a lot going on, so.
Colleen, I just wanted to, um, yeah, the kids, absolutely. I had so much feedback. They love, love, love the dances. They, they want more, so.
They do.
They love it. And I, um, I went to the Alice training, we were finished with the meeting and I think they had a great setup. It was just sad when I looked up in the bleachers and saw like four or five parents. So I think parents out there, if you're hearing, I think when they have things like that, you need to come. Cause it was a great, um, a, a lot of reassuring information. So just kind of move out there and try to get the community to get more involved with things like that. Cause nice setup, they did a good job. And then, um, I just wanted to speak about the interviews. Um, I was able to sit with, um, the group committee that they have for the coaches. And I just wanna say they did a really good job. They had a really good amount of questions. Everybody was drilled and drilled and they, you know, were very fortunate. So I was just blessed to be able to be a part of, um, interviews. It went really well for the, um, spring sports.
All right, moving on to, um, special services report.
Included, um, it speaks to the preschool lottery information, um, as well as the parent special education survey that went out.
I had a question about that. Um, I saw that Super Bowl had a thirteen percent response rate, um, but I was wondering how that was disseminated to parents?
Through, through principal newsletters. I don't know if there was additional direct email or not.
I, I know.
Yeah, sorry.
It's your report, so feel free to come up with. I'll just stand if that's okay. So we, uh, emailed parents, case managers emailed parents on their caseload. We brought tablets to any, uh, meetings that we had that parents would be there and asked them to fill it out either before or after their, their students' meeting. And case managers emailed three times specifically. I asked them at different, different, uh, checkpoints along the month that that was open, so.
I will say that response rate is almost triple the response rate that we typically get for the state special education survey. So it's not ideal, but it's moving in the right direction.
Um, as a parent, I would say there could be a higher rate. Um, I, I didn't get it at any of those things, so I didn't even know about it until I read this. So not, not faulting anybody, but I think there probably was some miscommunication on, on how that did get to parents or maybe not all the case managers did it the same. Um, cause I didn't even know about it until today.
Okay, that's good feedback. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Um, going on to the finance report?
Thank you. So I have included the, um, both the year and dates expenditure and revenue reports, um, on, on board docs. I, I will note that, um, you know, Colleen and Tim have done an exceptional job managing a very challenging budget year. We, we were obviously working under a default budget. Um, and we had, early on, we, we had some pretty significant, um, costs that we incurred. So, I mean, they've been working with their teams, um, and their, and the, the, the other administrators in the, in the school have, have really worked hard with, with Colleen and Tim to minimize and reduce costs. We, they, they were, um, they had to freeze any discretionary spending and really only expend on, um, unnecessary costs, uh, which is really, it may be hidden to the general public, um, but they, they really had to do a lot of work to, to manage this, this budget in a really challenging environment. So we are tracking, um, to, um, to finish the year currently with approximately a hundred and, um, just under a hundred and fifty thousand dollars um, of available, um, balance. Um, on the revenue side, we're, um, we're looking to likely finish the year with about forty thousand dollars in surplus, um, revenue. You know, when we look at, um, revenue, surplus revenue, that, that, you know, we estimate revenues in, in the fall. And then anything we expect to receive in revenue is reduced, um, you know, from the, what we collect in, in taxes. So it reduces the tax rate. Um, so in this case, you know, we're receiving, you know, maybe a little under, you know, currently about five thousand dollars more than we expected in banking interest. Where we should be going over in our Medicaid reimbursement, we're, we're currently, um, right on target. However, um, that is lagging revenue because it's reimbursement. So I expect us to continue to receive, um, that Medicaid revenue. You know, we, we got about five thousand dollars more in, uh, special education aid. So those are all, um, those all help, um, with that, um, positive balance. Also, one, one, one other note, uh, I neglected to mention, not to go back to the legal account. Uh, however, um, it was referenced that we're over budget, um, on the Board of Education by thirty thousand dollars. I will note it's, it's truly only approximately twenty-five thousand dollars because when we, um, we, we have a, if you note on the report, it has the original budget of eight thousand dollars and then that goes up to just over thirteen thousand dollars as a revised budget. The reason that, that's, there's a delta there is because we had a carryover in conference. So of, of just over five thousand dollars. So we'd incurred the costs in the last fiscal year, but it wasn't paid until, um, July, which is the next fiscal year. So it hit last year's books, but it shows up on this revenue report. So, um, in reality, um, we're, we've expended twenty, about twenty-five thousand dollars, not thirty thousand dollars. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you for bringing that up. That was from the prior year.
Correct. And then I, I also just wanna note that, um, you know, going forward into FY twenty-six, um, we, you know, as you know, we're in a default budget. Um, so we will, we will be presenting, um, a recommendation, um, later in the agenda. Additionally, we did, um, we did pass a special education expendable trust contribution, so that was fifty thousand dollars. Um, that will be contributed to that trust, which really, that, that's a positive, um, because that, that trust is intended to safeguard the district against, um, some of those volatile, um, special education costs that we, that we see from year to year. That it's difficult to, um, budget special education a year in advance. Students' needs change, students move in or out of the district. Uh, so that can, we can see some real, um, significant variation there. So, um, so that was really important that that, um, that that trust contribution was, um, was approved. So, um, be happy to answer any other questions in regard to the finance report?
All right, no other questions. We'll move on to the second read and adoption of policy E B C H Chemical Safety and Chemical Hygiene Plan.
Yes, so we discussed this at the last meeting. I've not received any comments or questions from the board, but this is a new policy required under law that went into effect in September, of the September.
Do you need a motion for this narrative? Yes, okay. So I'll make a motion to accept, um, policy, uh, E B C H Chemical Safety and Chemical Hygiene Plan.
All right, got a motion by Lacey. I need a second?
A second.
Seconded by Jen, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So does that mean it's adopted now? Next, we have new business proposed twenty twenty-five, twenty-six school year calendar.
Yes, so attached is the draft calendar for the upcoming year. This process has changed a little bit over the last couple of years because as a, this, as an SAU, we're required to align our calendar with Seco School of Technology, um, by law. And so we don't have that information typically until the beginning of the year because all of the sending districts are trying to put that information together. We meet and consult a reunion, um, regarding the proposed calendar and then do our best to make sure that the sending districts have honored all of their needs and requirements. and then do our best to make sure that the sending districts have honored all of their needs and requirements as well. So this would have a first day of school on August twenty-sixth. For all, uh, first through ninth grade and S S T students, and then the end of school would be June twelfth.
Would it be possible to add first day kindergarten on there?
Um.
So like last year there were. Yes, but it, a lot of people ask me that had new kindergartners that were confused, because it says first day of school, but they started doing it first day?
Um, yes, it would, it requires us to do a different calendar for each district.
But they don't all start at the same time?
Um, not necessarily.
That'll probably be a staff and for discussion too. We may have that planned, so.
But that's, it's a notation to the calendar, so. I would recommend we still adopt the ki- proposed calendar. If we can do that, and we'll look to see if we can make that work.
I realize they all start different days.
Welcome to S M P.
Will you come back after Labor Day?
You gotta channel it.
Uh, if you wanna deal, if you wanna keep people, those additional, those additional days in June and have the, um, the.
Jen, you just. You just had a lot of fun.
My, my district started after Labor Day, and they canceled February break, and are going to the end of June.
No, I'm just kidding.
Jen's a gentleman. Oh, boy, but Jen's, good, good job, Jen. People say it.
I will make a motion to adopt the proposed S A U twenty-one K through eight, twenty-five, twenty-six school year calendar as presented.
Got a motion by Lacy? I need a second?
I will second.
Second by Jen?
It's good, keep it consistent.
Got it.
Denise.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Next, we're going on to lead testing information.
Yes, so this was sent out to parents in January. This was also asked to be added to the February meeting. Um, since that letter went out, Matt, you can test this, but I think many of those faucets have already been replaced, and that was, that occurred during February vacation.
They have, they have not replaced all of them, um, however, they, they expect to by the end of April vacation. Um, and those are all marked, um, and they're not, um, not been retracing, um, outlets.
Is it just the faucets, um, or is it the pipes that go out, or just the faucets?
Typically, it's the, it's the faucets, however, it could, in some cases, that's, that's, uh, a concern, is it could be, um, the pipes. Um, however, I believe, um, in all the instances here at Seabrook, um, just the fixture swap outs, um, have resolved the issue.
A lot of times the fixtures are old and they don't get used regularly, and that what, that's what causes the buildup. So I've spoke to Peter, and I also gave Peter, I baked him and Colleen, um, so Get the Lead Out was an initiative by the New Hampshire Department of Health, um, Health and Human Services, so he sent it to me as a health officer, and I forwarded it so that Peter, the facilities, could try to go for the grant to get reimbursed for the expenses for the faucets, to try to help out, because obviously, that's not something that you prepare for. Um, and so, just trying to get some extra money. If they're gonna give it away, we'll take it, so, you know. Um, but they, they've done a great job trying to take care of everything.
Yeah, they had lowered the thresholds, um, for the testing requirements, and to Lacy's point, those, those outlets that aren't being used, it just, um, it, it gets built up, and then, and then, and they can't, like, run the water. Um, even, even if they ran it for a period of time, it, you'd get different results, um, but, um, it, it just, it makes it, it's a, it's a challenging, um, dynamic. Um, we, and we have, um, and that Get the Lead program is a, is a great program. We've had success getting those grants. Um, so I'm hopeful, I'm crossing my fingers that, um, we'll, we'll get some money back. Um, but it's actually pretty minimal, um, costs thus far.
Matt, can I ask you a question while we were bringing up lead though? The cost of the, that being called Cubbies, I don't know what exactly, but we have the money for those, and how much was it, like, under two thousand? And what are they, and where are they going? Cause like, I've heard about this, and didn't even know a thing about it myself, as a board member. Are we building spaces, cause Cubby would be to me is to put your lunchbox and your, um, stuff like that. These are actually big things that kids actually will be inside of? Is that how it works?
They're essentially individual workstations.
Huh?
They're essentially individual workstations.
A part of the NET program, um, so they're, um, that, the es- the cost estimate was eighteen hundred dollars, however, um, we expect it to be, um, coming less. It's probably gonna be more, like, fifteen hundred.
So you don't need any approval from us, then?
No, um, it's, um, they are functioning, um, what needs to, what needs to be done is, um, it needs to be, like, spackled and painted, um, but they are, they were created, um, with the ability to, to be removed and moved to a different location, um, in case, um, we decide to change rooms. Um, and the, what they were placing were portable, um, kind of dividers that, um, the students would move, and it was becoming a safety concern, and it's also offered very little privacy for the students, so.
It just scared me when I heard it, because I know out in Massachusetts at one time, they had, they were calling them cages, so there was no windows, there was no light coming in, and the kids were put in there for, you know, calm down or whatever it was, but I just wanna make sure we're not going to that. What, Lacy?
These are like, uh, cubicles.
Yeah, but I wanna make sure we're not going there, that's all. And not only that, on the default budget, this, we, the program that we're talking about was a one-year approval, so that we could revisit it, and if we're in a default budget that bad, I'm just gonna wait and hear where the cuts are, and hope they're not teachers. Because to me, you wrote your newest things, and that would be a program that is the newest on a one-year. So, just putting it out there.
Yeah, I mean, the, the NET program was, was implemented this past year. Um, we included it in the budget for the board and budget committee. We both approved it. Um, we, that's, the board has full discretion on what, what reductions, um, it wants to make for that three hundred thousand dollars. Um, however, um, if we were to remove the NET program, I, I caution against that particular cut, because that will actually incur additional costs, because, um, we would, we would then have to, um, send some students out of districts, um, which would be substantially higher than what the NET program costs.
And that's what I wanna report on as a board member. If those students, they prescribed, last I heard, um, if they are not provided, so that the community understands if we do not have that program, that all of those students would have to go out, which would be a lot more money, but at the same time, I had someone say to me, hey, you've got four hundred thousand in that special education account. And I said, yeah, but that's, that can go in the blink of an eye. So for me, I know you say we could possibly have to send two kids out. As a board member, I would really like a little more detail of yes, we would definitely have to, so people understand why that program needs to stay.
I don't know that we can provide a hundred percent transparency on that, because that's not a decision that's made at the administrative level. That's a decision that's made at the parent and I E P team level around placement. Um, but I would say that the needs of some of those students are so complex, um, that it would be difficult to meet them without the self-contained program that is in place within the district.
And I'll agree with that. I think that we brought in the program, and it, like I've said in other meetings, it's really truly been a highlight this year for our school in terms of those students getting what they need and getting the academics that they deserve, like all students. As a public school, we welcome everyone, and so we have to have a solution for some of the higher needs students, and, and this is working extremely well.
Any other questions?
No.
Can I just ask one about the faucets before you move on? How does the retesting process?
Can we open public comment back up, please, so we can do this right? So if anybody has a question, do we wanna open it?
I'll ask him to open it, it's fine.
Yeah, if you wanna open it, we can open it so they can speak.
We can open public comment. At five fifty-one? Aye, yeah, five fifty-one.
George Oshin, Ten Austin Way, sorry to do that again. I just wanted to, um, understand how the retesting process, let testing process works after they replace the faucets to ensure that it was that and not the plumbing itself.
Yes, there's pretty strict, um, guidelines on how the process goes. Um, once, once it tests over the threshold, um, we need to immediately, um, you know, post that, or, um, disconnect the, the water for that particular faucet. Um, and then, um, once we do the remediation, we have a certain number of days, um, to then come back and do another test, um, and then report back. Um, so that, um, you know, at that point, if it fails, we kinda continue that process. If it passes, then, um, we are, uh, you know, we're, we're, we're good to go.
So then that, then all the faucets that have already been replaced thus far have already been tested and passed? Or are you still waiting to finish the job before you test?
We're still in the process.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
I mean, that's, and this isn't something that it passes, I mean, this, this will be regular testing, so there, there, there is state law on lead testing, so even the ones that pass will be tested again.
Okay, thanks for clarifying.
Anybody else?
My show. It's, it's also George, part of, um, the annual health inspection and fire inspection that we do. Um, we request the, um, lead testing as a part of that, so it's something they continuously do, and they have to give it to the town departments to review as well.
It was more so you replace it, what happens before the sign gets taken, but that's what I was trying to clarify. Thank you.
Right, yep.
Yeah, thank you. Do we keep it open for thirty minutes, or is it not?
No, you don't have to.
We will close public comment if there's no one else that would like to speak on that, at five fifty-three. We're gonna move on to policies, first read and adoption.
Yes, so typically, it doesn't say first read and adoption.
Okay.
Uh, it is written this way because the, in January of twenty twenty-five, these would have been on your agenda for last month, but in January of twenty twenty-five, the Title IX rules that were in place at the start of this year were vacated, and so we're going back to, um, what were the twenty twenty, um, Title IX regulations. And so, we are asking for the board to, um, adopt these policies tonight. All of the notes from the Hampshire School Board Association that outline the changes that are made were included in, in your agenda, but I'm happy to answer any questions. Do you have any other questions, Julie policies?
No, I, I reviewed them, they're straightforward, that go directly with that N H S B A's recommendation.
Okay, so we need, do we need a motion for a first read?
No, actually, we're, we're asking you to.
Oh, first read and adopt.
Motion is written to adopt, yeah.
Okay. So we need a motion for?
Motion to waive school board policy B G A A and approve the adoption as recommended for the eight policies.
Okay, there we go, no.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Jen, I need a second?
A second.
Second by Casey? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Maria?
I'm staying.
I'll just have a minute to look at them. And Casey? Yes. Yes. Thank you.
And then the next one is the firearms. I put it on the agenda, cause I needed it a long time before.
Yeah.
I, I originally wanted Officer Deaton Harper to be here, so you can skip over it unless anybody else is, um, calling. Did you have any questions about it?
So I would just add, um, add, I'd sent a note, I think back the end of January, just that state law changed in twenty twenty-two. And if you look at the end of the policy that's attached, there was opinion from someone's attorney, not our attorney.
Yeah, yeah, I was interested in school district, yeah.
Um, given at that time, um, saying, once the law changes went into effect, that this policy would not.
Be my lull, Boyd?
Correct, um, and so.
Oh, okay.
Just our policy is so vague, I feel like, I, I mean, more pertains to s- the student and not like outside individuals.
Well, the challenge is under state law, we don't have the authority to restrict outside individuals.
Right, but if we put a policy in place, wouldn't that be more?
Doesn't trump law.
So if an individual walked in with a gun into the school, Officer Keith couldn't do anything about it, because of federal law?
If someone, if, if someone proceeded, because of state law, federal law prevents guns from being in schools. State law says they can be, and you can't set any rules that contradict that.
It's baffling.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There was lots of testimony, it was something we talked about when the legislature was looking at making this change in twenty twenty-two. It was something we talked about at our legislative roundtables, but that's what the legislature voted. Um, in twenty twenty-two, the Attorney General's Office put out a note about that. Um, I think it was in our board report in August of twenty-two, but it said, "If any individual feels threatened or believes that a crime has occurred or is about to occur on school property with or without a firearm, that person should immediately contact law enforcement by dialing nine one one, immediately notifying the law enforcement officer and/or activating their local emergency operations plan." So, they're saying, don't put a policy in place, that's what you do. Right, so if someone comes into the gun and that's perceived to be a threat, then you contact your S R O, go into lockdown, call nine one one. Um, and it's up to law enforcement to determine whether or not that constitutes a threat. But creating a policy won't empower them to enforce it.
Okay.
But I, and, yeah, certainly if you want further information, that's something you could request, uh, legal opinion about. I just know that was the information we provided, um, when the law changes occurred.
Okay.
Alright, moving on to the fiscal year twenty-six default budget.
Thank you. Um, so, as you know, um, due to the, um, operating budget failing a ballot, um, we will be operating, um, at the default budget level, um, for this upcoming FY twenty-six, um, school year. So what that means is, um, a reduction of two hundred and ninety-seven thousand, eight hundred and seventy-one dollars, um, for a bottom line budget of, um, eighteen million, three hundred and thirty-six thousand, seven hundred and eighteen dollars, and that's, um, per, um, state of New Hampshire statute. Um, so I will note, this is the, um, fourth time, um, that we've gone to a default budget, um, in recent years. Um, we previously were under a default in fiscal year twenty, fiscal year twenty-three, um, fiscal year twenty-five last year, and now, um, now next year, and then fiscal year twenty-six. Um, so these, um, this really, um, creates some significant challenges, um, in both providing for resources, um, but also maintaining, um, proper staffing levels, um, which are necessary for student growth and achievement. Um, so, as a result, um, we are, um, you know, we worked with Tim and, uh, Colleen, um, to, um, review our proposal, um, and prioritize, um, reductions in order to, um, reduce the budget to that, um, by that two hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollar, um, number. Um, we do believe that we have, um, recommendations that, um, is aimed to minimize, um, the impact on, um, student learning. Um, and we do have, um, four recommended budget adjustments. Um, so we are recommending to maintain, um, the proposed budget, and then implement, um, for, um, for specific reductions. The first of which is, um, air ducts cleaning. Um, we're looking to, um, defer, um, our air duct cleaning for one year, um, as part of our district's ongoing, um, multi-year cleaning plan, air duct cleaning plan. Um, that will, um, result in a fifteen thousand dollar reduction.
Air, did you just say air duct cleaning, that you're gonna, we're not gonna do it?
We're deferring it a year, so it's a multi-year plan.
Yeah, but is that really a wise thing to do with everything that goes around and germs and staff and kids here? I mean, that's, not cleaning the air ducts to me is, i- i- is a no-brainer. That should be done, you know, we know that a lot, I mean. Are you talking to the air they bring on?
So I might just suggest we go through the full list of proposals, because I'm sure there's gonna be a lot of discussion about, about the list.
So, um, we heard about, um, of the, our current bus routes, um, and I, I agree with, um, the assessment that our routes are, um, really close to, to capacity. Um, so I would not suggest reducing, um, one of our, um, regular, um, routes. Um, that being said, um, we are proposing to, um, discontinue. Um, that being said, um, we are proposing to um, discontinue that the dedicated um, rec- recreation center bus. So that's on top of, so that's a, and that's a half a route essentially, because it's only in the afternoon. Um, and what we would do is, we would incorporate um, the recreation center um, as a stop on our existing routes. So we still provide the opportunity for students to to get to the record center, it just won't be a dedicated bus. Um, so that will result in a um, reduction of forty-one thousand two hundred and thirteen dollars. And I'll also note that there is, this proposal is on on board docs, if you are, if you aren't. Um, we, um, so this year, we have, um, we were notified of retirement of our Spanish teacher at the end of this current fiscal year. Um, so we, this does offer us an an opportunity to kind of reassess our world language programming. Um, so the the current model, um, you know, we had, we had taken a look um, a couple of years ago. Um, Dr. Hobbs conducted a um, curriculum review of across all of our districts on full world language. Um, and it it did identify um, that what we're, our current model, um, which is only offering Spanish um, in the eighth grade, um, hasn't um, truly effectively um, prepared our students for um, for Spanish two at Winnicott. So what we are suggesting is rather than filling this position and just continuing what we've always done in the past, um, that we form a committee and we 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 do an evaluation, um, we do do the proper research and develop um, a revised um, world language program um, that we can then um, you know, propose to the school board um, and and look to implement in the following year, in twenty twenty-six, twenty-seven. Um, that committee could have um, board representation, obviously, we would include, you know, um, our, you know, curriculum coordinator, administrators, um, teachers, um, to really take a hard look at our world language program um, and see where we can improve upon that model, um, looking looking forward.
So do you mean we won't have any done for a year?
So we, that's the proposal is, so for next year, there would there would not be.
That's a problem.
So that would be a reduction of a hundred and fifty-seven thousand two hundred and ninety dollars. Um, and then the third um, reduction would be um, some health insurance adjustments. So um, obviously, you know, we budget a year in advance and this case, it's been, you know, five months since we originally put this budget together. Um, and whenever we see staffing changes, um, or if um, or situations change in families, um, oftentimes their benefits elections change, so they might, you know, it might go from a, you know, two-person to a family plan or vice versa, or might, you know, you might hire someone that doesn't take their plan because their spouse does, or their spouse might get a job and they go on their plan. Um, in any event, um, we we are proposing to reduce um, the health insurance line item by eighty-four thousand three hundred and sixty-eight dollars. Um, so um, so those those are the four um, recommendations that we are making um, to get to that two hundred and ninety-seven thousand eight hundred and seventy-one dollars. Um, and um, and and go forward with the default budget. I will note that we had um, significant conversation over the last, well, it's been a week today. Um, there's no easy answers. Um, we have, we we all, we had a lean budget already. I mean, like I mentioned, we've been in a default budget um, for the last, or this will be the fourth out of the last, you know, last six years, seven years. Um, we we never build in any sort of extra like um, contingency fund.
Yeah.
So um, we we looked at all the options, um, and weighing how the impact will be to our students, because that's, you know, first and foremost, um, we wanna minimize that impact. So that that was our process, um, and we we feel that this is, um, you know, this is our recommendation for a challenging situation.
Yeah, this actually feels a lot better than last year's.
Really?
And this feels, um, yeah, the health insurance is is obvious. I mean, that's a wonderful savings, we got lucky with that.
Right.
Um, transportation adjustment, I mean, that's that's a great way, they can still make it to the rack without causing, um, you know, disruption, too much disruption, a lot of the buses go by there anyway. Um, the air duct cleaning, I don't, um, I know Maria had said something, uh, if you wanna elaborate, but I I don't see that being that big of a, an issue to to kind of delay it a year for air duct cleaning. Um, and then the Spanish teacher, this is just me kind of going through the list, but, um, I had Miss Morrell, Miss Morrell was wonderful, I, it's sad to see her go. Um, when I was here, it was an elective, so you took it fifth through eight. So if you, we do decide to go that route, I would like to be a part of the committee to try to brainstorm some ideas about, um, you know, putting Spanish back in or or Spanish and French or doing something along those lines. Um, so I will volunteer to be a part of that committee as far for next year.
I was gonna ask what that was, but.
Yeah. Um, and I, and also how, because I know in eighth grade, my son's in eighth grade now, so it's like a core class. How would that look as far as eighth grade goes next year for the seventh graders, how how would their schedule change?
Well, that's what the committee would determine.
No, it's a means for world language.
For, I mean, yeah, for next year.
I I would say that's that's still being evaluated by administration, I think is the fair answer. I think it's gonna require some revisiting of of the current framework for the way specials are offered. Um, both both UA and those, um, um, I don't wanna call them specials, but those other court, those other areas that are attached to grade level teams, so, um, to make that work.
So I just wanna talk about the position, because I just said, um, half hour ago, that I would not be in favor of cutting a teaching position. Our kids are already behind the eight ball in everything. The last thing we should do is get rid of Spanish for a whole year for anybody. And I think that's absolutely not a good idea. In fact, we don't have to reinvent a Leo with a committee, because guess why? All the other assisted districts are doing it under U-Mout, and I'm sure you could look over and say, hey, how are they doing this for sixth through eighth, and how can we do that?
Well, your your.
Because all their budgets pass.
Their mother's in the past.
Yeah, but we don't have to, there's other places.
Their schools are also not, middle schools only with three hundred and fifty kids. So it's it's very different to try to schedule someone in across three grade levels to try to have daily world language. You would need more than one position, if that is the goal, to have it try to match with the other districts.
But you know how it can be done, right, even if it's with one grade or two grades?
Sure, but it's really not about me, each of those communities does it a little bit differently. And that's why you put together a committee to try to make some decisions about what's best for your individual community.
Yeah, well, we know our kids certainly can use Spanish as well as anything else, and taking it away for a year, I think is totally unfair to those seventh graders going into eighth. There's gotta be a way that we can make that work for eighth grade somehow. And to take a teacher out is not what we should be doing right now, and I'm sorry, and I'm gonna stand on it, you guys can do what you want. Taking a teacher out of this school right now is probably the worst thing you could do.
The person is retiring, so we're actually not moving a body, and so, you know, due diligence to Tim and I and, you know, the admin team, when we look at every single possibility down to like, hi, how many computers did you give up, from the tech guy to the, you know, to Peter and his department. I mean, we went through all the lines and all the items. This is not removing a teacher because this person is retiring. So our our ask for you all is, there's no impact on adults losing their jobs.
No, but you're not telling.
So they take Spanish for one year, I I think kids should have a language, I I am not gonna, I'm not in any way minimizing that. My my daughter took Spanish for one year in eighth grade, and guess what? She took Spanish one in high school, so our kids take Spanish one. So for her to take it for one year, doesn't give them the bump that they need to go into Spanish two. Because, I mean, Denise can only do so much in one year, right? Ideally, yeah, it'd be great if we had less kids, we could do it like other schools do over multiple years. I don't think anybody's disagreeing with that. But if we're looking at human beings and bodies, these are the four items we said are gonna have the least. Is it gonna impact us? Of course it is, because we're gonna have to look at our schedule and our people and our UA. But, you know, Denise Morrell is retiring, so unfortunate for us, because she's great, we love her. But that's that's a big chunk of change that we can add to all of the other items that we labored over, labored over.
It's an unfortunate unfortunate situation where we're in a default budget four years in a row, for a.
Yeah, I just don't take away from kids.
Not in a row, but it's it's hard.
I don't think anybody.
So if we take Spanish away, kids are gonna be without it next year, that's what I'm worried about.
I don't think. Anybody wants to take away from kids, but it was sort of alluded to earlier that we could make do on default, because we did it last year. But surviving is not the same as thriving in foreign languages, that's that's thriving, that's what we want, these are goals. But we need to come together as a community and and approve the budget to get these supports, these enrichments, these opportunities in place. If we wanna compete with neighbor in towns, we have to invest in the future. The community decided that that wasn't a choice they wanna make this year, so, you know, I feel like choices are tough, but knowing some of the things that were on the table last year, I feel like this is, this is hearing the community and the board and everything that happened last year when we had to do this, and really looking at things that would have the least impact to the situation that we're in.
And I think that has a big impact, because those eighth graders going in are not gonna have any Spanish at all.
Well, what if what if we offered some type of like club or like after-school stipend type thing?
There there are some opportunities through um, a local program called One World Language, there may be others that offer some after-school um, language classes um, at different schools around the seacoast. So that's something we could certainly explore, um, it doesn't provide that opportunity to all children, right? Um, so we recognize this is not ideal, it is not, there is a lot of discussion, this is not at the top of anyone's list.
This is really the worst part of the entire year.
It really is, because it's like you you're just, you're not gonna win, no matter what you do, there's just no winning. Or to take money away from the kids, you, it it's just, you can't, there's no winning, it's terrible. Um, yeah, no, and I and I I totally get where Marie's coming from, because obviously, we don't wanna take anything away from our children.
Right.
Um.
Maybe part-time without benefits bringing somebody in, I mean, I don't know. Just for the eighth grade at least.
But it is just the eighth grade now, that's a full-time position, just teaching eighth grade.
Yeah, but if you can't give full-time, you can't, but to give nothing.
But then who are we giving it to, then they're getting it once or twice a week, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, that's better than nothing. I mean, I'm just putting it out there, we used to get shop once or twice a week and home net once or twice a week, and we did. So I just having nothing with that, I don't know.
But what else would you cut?
I took English for five years and the only word I know is hello, so.
That's English, Jen, oh.
It's actually pronounced blah. Long time.
That's not what I meant.
That was a good one.
Is that Ellen Ocaso?
And you have to say that note. Let's keep English, you know, definitely.
Yeah, that's too bad.
I think I think if we could do some sort of after-school program or club or something, I mean.
Or Babbel.
Well, I do do it, I do do Lingo, yeah, because I I need to learn Spanish, and with my accent, it's terrible. But, um, I do do Lingo, but, um, I think if we did offer something for children that are interested in, especially eighth graders that are interested in, because I believe in in high school, it's a requirement for certain four-year colleges. So something to give them like a little like push, um, I would be okay with it. Like you said, Miss Morrell is retiring, so it's not like we're letting someone go. And then we can restructure, we can have a year to kind of restructure this in a more affordable way, in a different way. Um, but I really would like to see some sort of something after-school that are an elective, not an elective, that's high school, but you know what I'm saying, something that the kids have the opportunity to to do something if they want to.
There's there's definitely companies that you can look at after school. I mean, I know my, I have a child that's doing an after-school Spanish class, so it's gonna be like a mobile child. There's there are a number of options that we could look into.
Can you, can I ask you a question, just because this is one of the things last year that we cut? Are we giving anything for SAS this year for the snacks or after-school meals or anything like that?
No, it wasn't in your group, but.
So it's with that with that money, though, there was something in there that said snacks, supplies, and it had SAS on in one of those areas. So we don't, we don't give anything, whether it's car insurance, snacks after school, a meal after school, we're not doing any of that anymore.
No, I mean, we we provided a, we we had a d- a dinner program that's, you know, that was.
Yeah, we used to give a meal.
Right, but that was that was us, they just, SAS just delivered the meal, but we we got actually reimbursement for that.
Yeah.
Um, that was, so that's totally free. Um, that was, if you recall, this past year, that was, um, we no longer qualify for that.
You got meal, right? SAS then, we did.
That's us.
Yeah, we did.
Seabrooks, Seabrook, um, we're still doing, um, we're still qualified for the snack program, uh, but again, that's.
That goes to SAS, right?
It doesn't go to SAS, it's it's, the SAS like hands it out, but it's our.
For after-school?
After-school, but that, again, that's.
It doesn't go to our kids during the day, though.
No, it's an after-school snack program.
Just for SAS.
Well, for, I mean, any, any school program.
Whenever Seabrook uses for after-school.
Well, that's all we use right now, but Tim had brought up too, at some point, needing YMCA coming back in, would be kind of a good thought too with them, in addition to.
Yeah, we've previously had other other organization, other after-school programs, we had, um, like C-Stars, I think.
Yeah, C-Stars. But I'm just asking, because I wanna make sure we're not, um, you know, and I do think that if we took a good hard look at this budget, that Spanish would not be on the table right now, because I think there's layers that we could be looking at and we should be looking at. And I'm not asking for it to all be done tonight, because I think that's asking a lot of this board to make a decision tonight, because it doesn't have to be made tonight, and I think we really should look at, if there's anything you could bring back different for Spanish, instead of take it out completely, I'd like to know that before I made my decision. Um, to know that there's gonna be something in place, and that's just me as a board member. Because I really, I'm telling you, you put our kids behind the eight ball enough, and I know we're doing everything we can to bring them forward, but I just don't wanna take away learning that all these other districts are getting, they're gonna go in to high school with a year or two of Spanish, and our kids are gonna come in with nothing if we don't make a little plan here for next year for those eighth graders.
Ah, so do you?
I feel like that's what they did. The administration took a hard look at everything, I don't know, I mean, I don't know, you guys can speak on it a little more, but.
No, they do wanna show, but we need to take a hard look, and we need to make sure there's something we don't see that we may question.
Do you have any suggestions?
They they give it to us.
Huh? Do you have any like suggestions to like replace, um, this one fifty-seven?
I would like a little more time to be able to be, do that, and I would like to hear back from them, what they can do, instead of take it all away, what they can offer to keep a little something here for next year.
You just said it was us, is it us as a school board, or is it?
We provide our recommendation, however, you you have, you have the full budget, so if we be, we we'd be welcome to to hear any suggestions, um, because it's obviously a collaborative approach, this is our recommendation. Um, but we would be absolutely be welcome to have a conversation. I I assume there was some review of the budget by the board, um, leading up to this meeting, knowing that we had a default budget and that there was gonna be this discussion. So, but if you need more time, then that's up to the board whether you need more time.
I I would just like to see you bring something to give us an idea, whether it's a stipend, whether it's an after-school um, thing for the kids for Spanish, before I would say yes, I'm cutting that out completely for that amount of money. I don't know if it maybe you only need twenty thousand of that or whatever, but I'd like to hear back from you on what you could offer um, for after-school Spanish um, idea, not the whole thing, before I vote, because I'm not, I will not go along with cutting Spanish for these kids, they hit, have enough on things, and we can do it.
We could propose a club after-school, we could have SAS if they could. We could propose a club after school, we could have SAS if they could consider, cuz they're always trying to work with us. I mean, RSW says conversations with us that that would be open to other kids, um.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
Can't speak for him, but it's definitely something he would even be on board for, I think, in my experience working with him. Um it fits right into the category of what SAS is looking into.
Yeah. Or maybe Ms. Morale will come do our after school stipend pot time for us for the next year.
They would cut.
I think she's going to Florida, that's why.
Did you just hear that?
She won.
My my mother, my mother-in-law is a Spanish teacher, so maybe I can convince her to.
Yeah.
Really, see? So just.
I know, it's not it's not a real offer.
Well, you never know, if somebody knows it, they can come in and maybe a maybe a college student, maybe you know, a high school student, maybe somebody that's had four or five or six years of it as well and they come in and there's a stipend for after school for the kids that are interested. I mean, I just don't wanna see them taking it away altogether, that's all.
We're trying to prevent taking bodies, human beings away, yeah, that's why we put it up.
Right. Alright, so let me explain this sort of how do you, so I know that you're not cutting a teacher. I know that you have a teacher retirement, totally respect that. I am saying we're not replacing that person full time as it was, that's all. And so I wanna make sure we have something in place for the kids and we can do all that brainstorming of the next year. But I don't wanna leave them without something. I think that's just really not my opinion.
So just to clarify, um you're okay with removing the teach the teaching position as long as there's some sort of.
Yeah. Something.
Something, okay, I think that's fair.
I don't wanna remove what is not gonna sell it.
Like a after school something.
Yeah.
Is that something that we could talk to Forrest about and and defer this to the next meeting? Or approve with the condition that there's some sort of extracurricular Spanish program offered? I mean, if no kid takes it, they don't take it, but at least we could, you know, offer it to them, a a club or.
I think too. I think too though, Lacey, I just wanna say some people don't send their kids to SAS for whatever reason. They don't have a high number for those older kids. So I think looking at our staff first and looking at what we can bring in um is is important as well as you can look at SAS, but I don't think it should be the end all, you gotta go to SAS or you can't do it. I think it should be a couple of different scenarios we could look at.
I mean, I think that this is all, this is a great idea, and I think we we are committed to ensuring that we look at all of the options.
Yeah.
Um to provide, and it sounds like there's strong desire to have something after school, and I think that's the only we can deliver on.
Yes.
But go ahead, alright.
Just it's just uncertain what what that will look like, but we will.
Yeah. Right.
We'll be committed to to cutting something.
So could we approve, could we approve this with that condition that there will be some sort of idea or plan set in motion? Is that is that a fair thing to do that we approve this and that way we can move forward with this? But something in the next month or two to come back to be like, hey, this is our idea of um what we wanted to do to include a world language? Is that something that everybody feels comfortable with?
With the committee being formed to study it and maybe the committee's looking at how we're gonna get through that one year as well.
Yeah.
Now, I think my only, I agree with that, and I think there's a lot of good ideas, I would like to think one of these would pan out, but what happens if we can't, right, it doesn't, and that's a contingency on the budget, which is time sensitive and we need to approve.
It doesn't.
Right. Hmm, right. How time sensitive is it now that we get this done? Just date wise?
Um I mean, it would be good to get it done by the next board meeting.
Mm-hmm.
At the latest.
By the next board meeting?
That that's that's really about the the latest we've gone.
It has to be that. Mm-hmm.
Well, we have nominations.
For us.
Right, so that then.
That having to be done by that next meeting.
So. Then we'll we'll need to discuss that too for the next meeting because I know we won't be have to, Lacey and I won't be have to make.
Yeah.
On your vacation.
Yeah.
I mean, I think I think with the contingency that we have a plan, that doesn't mean.
Doesn't mean it.
I mean, there's something could derail the plan, but it could certainly have a contingency that we will, this this administration will deliver a plan for after school program.
Just and not focus just on SAS, but how could we do it for general?
Right.
Whether it's have a student come down, I mean, there's a lot of ideas here that we could really.
SAS is only one option, I think we're gonna look at all options.
Yeah.
So I can make that motion then to approve uh the updated uh fiscal year twenty six budget proposal as presented with the contingency of, how how would you like me to word this?
Plan.
A a plan for world language or?
Yeah.
About the formation of a committee to develop a plan for for um addressing world language.
That that works, it works, you know, I think that's I think that's in.
Okay.
I think that's the longer term plan, I think really, I mean, I I I don't disagree, right, that's the longer term plan, I think the.
I like the word no shame.
I think the short term plan is really just to um.
Yeah.
Come, well, come together with, bring a proposal for a partial world language offering um outside of the school day, right, for next year.
And um I think too, so we'll have to visit the daily schedules too, probably the next meeting, what it would look like. Something, what it would look like without that in there anymore.
That's probably gonna take a long.
Yeah, that's true, yeah. That could not happen.
Yeah, that's a lot of work.
I'll be honest with you.
It's, is it one period a day that you're doing that or how does it go, or is it four?
Well, she teaches four.
Four a day?
Five, she's a grand.
Five, she's a grand.
Yeah.
Okay. There is no way we could draft that by the next meeting.
Right, come on, so I just need to know what the motion is going to go with.
Ms. Morale could do math though.
I, so I actually will do a motion to approve the updated um fiscal year twenty six budget proposal as presented. And then we can discuss at the next meeting some sort of um after school pro- or proposal. That's that's my motion anyway, okay?
Okay. Lacey made the motion, I need a second.
Second.
Seconded by Casey. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Lacey?
Oh, I see, yeah, sorry.
Casey?
And I'm gonna abstain, but I'm gonna say why. I until I have something in front of me, I don't wanna make a commitment to take that money out. So until the plan is in place next time around, I wouldn't vote um to take that money out. I'm gonna see it before I say yes, sorry.
Okay, sorry, I'm sure.
Yeah.
Alright, moving on to the youth services grant.
Yes, so Matt sent the board information about this back a few weeks ago, I think at this point. This is the um grant to maintain substance abuse prevention counselor um at the middle school. Um this position has been in place, I think this is year fourteen, um that this position has been in place here. Um we we are a sub awardee of this grant. Um and essentially all of that then reimbursed, we received the funding. Um and all of that funding then is used to reimburse um Seacoast Youth Services for the position that they employ.
What do you receive, where do you receive the funding from?
Comes from J S I.
J S I grant? And is that federal?
No.
No? Not federal.
Is it, this is the same one that we had accepted last year during the time where Brett Walker and um Vic, yes, okay.
Yeah, that was a start with Brett Walker.
That was different, right?
This year, it's the same meeting. Yeah, I, cuz I believe they use the Seacoast Youth Services, Vic is from Seacoast Youth Services, yeah, okay, I just.
Correct.
What, can you tell me how much in kind we're expected to pay this year out of that, how does, how much is it?
So it's a, so it's a ten thousand dollar um that we budgeted for um rem or costs, and that's twenty five thousand in kind.
And they are set up with an office? We would have. Correct, it's a shared office space, there's no additional cash contribution, that money, that is, that in kind contribution comes from the use of our facility, um she uses, shares an office here at the middle school. It comes from just catering in our professional development activities, so that that is additional time provided to her. Um the um use of our our school counselor also participates in the red ribbon week activities that she coordinates. That time is considered in kind time.
What, Matt, what were you talking, cuz I remember last year having this conversation about twenty five thousand and and it came out of, we had to match out of us the budget. Cuz Vic Malone's a, I mean, I don't know if anybody knows him, but they're a pretty big group, they get a lot of grants.
That. That. So that was for an addi- to add an additional position, which the board rejected.
Right, so we don't pay a cent of in kind cash to.
Matt already said.
Ten thousand dollars in cash.
So yes, we do.
Correct, you already said.
And that was, and that was by those.
Yeah, I I was hearing you say we don't, so that's what I'm trying to clarify.
That was the point, she was referencing the in kind contribution.
So there's ten thousand right there out of the budget, nothing for nothing because I bet if you got ahold of Vic and said, hey, you guys have this much money, cuz they have a lot, they get a lot of water grant money, maybe we could save that ten thousand as well. Has anybody reached out to ask that? Cuz the in kind with the building would cost us anything.
She's valued, she's worth the ten thousand.
No, I'm not saying worth, I'm saying if they can take it out of grant money and we don't have to take it from the taxpayers, whoa, win one for both of us, that's all.
They don't, I don't think this grant's gonna allow that.
You don't think, but I'm asking.
Correct, because I was in touch with Janine as recently as today because they originally, we had originally asked them to come for the meeting tonight. But that that is the criteria as we understand it, um so I don't see that as an option.
Well, that's just me, and I'm saying there's ten grand from the taxpayers that probably Vic could pay out of our grant money and we wouldn't have to do that, but that's me.
No, I'm happy to ask him if if they have that available and want to support that, but I I don't expect that to be the case given that we've been, you've had this position for thirteen years and we've been paying the ten thousand for several.
Yeah, well, we got a default budget two years in a row, so that's the difference. If we can get it from grants, we should be getting it from grants, that's all.
I I agree, I think the value that we get from having a second full-time school counselor for ten thousand dollars is amazing.
It's amazing what she does with kids, she meets with groups, she does youth for youth, she does red ribbon week.
Yeah.
It's really hard for one counselor to kind of help facilitate three hundred kids, so to have her as an additional person. She did a group last year with parents after school, just talking about, you know, what's it like being a middle school parent? I think you're getting a real deal for ten thousand dollars.
That's real.
No, no mistake in that, but if we can save money, we should be.
She has phenomenal connection with kids. Well, if we're all about kids, then choose a person that we wanna pay the ten thousand dollars.
We wanna keep her, but if we're all about grant money and not using budget, we should be using grant money. And maybe, what would you do if you asked him and he said absolutely, I understand two years in default, I have that money, not a problem. I mean, that, um nothing to do with the person, position or anything, just in in general, what if he does? That's ten thousand, you ain't got a right for, just saying. Alright, what, Michelle?
Um do we need a motion to accept the grant or? So anybody would like to make the mo- motion to accept the youth service grant, services grant?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Lacey, I need a second.
I'll second.
Seconded by Jen, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I know when I wanna go on record, it'd be a no because we possibly could have just saved ten thousand dollars out of the budget. And I think that that question should have been asked from the grant money, and that's all. I wanna do what I can to save what we can, and that definitely is a spot.
Alright, and now we're going on to, well, personnel will be discussed in non-public.
Mm-hmm.
And future meetings, we have a S A U joint board meeting Monday, March thirty first, have one of a kind of. And then Seabrook School Board meeting Tuesday, April eighth. Uh I know Lacey and I would like to reschedule um and possibly do it before April eighth. I don't know if anybody could.
I know there's these dates, so uh in order to P T O meeting, April first.
Okay.
But for me, I could be available on the seventh.
Um the seventh, they have a planning board meeting, but I can be available the second.
I can be available after the eighth, but not before. Do we have anything, another?
I could do the seventeenth, if it was too late, you have to do contracts.
Yeah, the deadline is for fifteenth.
It's the fifteenth?
For nominations.
Yes, okay.
Which means they have to be done by the fourteenth. They have to be done by the fourteenth.
Provide notice to people by the dozen.
How come you can't meet on the eighth?
I'm um.
Another Lacey.
I'm on vacation.
I'm on vacation.
There's three of us still here, you could technically meet.
Yeah, but nominations, I prefer to be here.
Yeah, if you guys would please reschedule, I would I would love to be here for that.
Me too.
I'm free whenever, so to you guys.
Well, the P T O is on the first.
I don't know how long your show is, is that six?
Hmm.
Okay. I mean, I could do the second, April second.
I'm just looking up the calendar, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I.
See what we got, cuz we have it's at one.
So Wednesday.
To meet.
There's nothing going on on April second that we know of for the school?
It's just like a no school, teacher P D day on that day, but I didn't do that.
I will be able to be here, yeah, there's.
And that's a Wednesday?
Mm-hmm.
Correct.
And you wrote that whole, does a Monday, does April fourteenth is on a Monday, Monday's not good for anybody?
I don't, I don't come back till fifteenth.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a communications committee meeting too, I'll be back, but it's a communications committee meeting that night.
Okay. Okay, and everybody's gone the whole week of April eighth to the twelfth, right?
Fifteenth for me.
Okay, and Lacey's gone on vacation that whole week too?
Yeah, just the four days that we.
Yeah, I don't see, I don't have any other possibilities, you're gonna have to throw it.
On the second.
Yeah, that's what it looks like.
So, yeah.
Does nothing else available?
Anybody else do April second?
And what about the P T O, it's not on?
No, it's on.
April first.
Oh, good, so it won't.
April fool's day.
It won't um affect that.
Good. Alright, so we'll, can we reschedule April second?
Is that, you guys don't have anything else that's included? Okay, I will have. We'll knock on one, we'll we'll do that.
So at four third, four thirty, it's good for everybody, okay, perfect.
Thank you for rescheduling that, I appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
Just remember it down the road, if we need it, we gotta reschedule for others, right?
Yep.
Okay, I'm hoping you do it.
We're usually pretty good about it as a team.
Yep.
Okay, on we go.
Mm-hmm.
Alright, um.
We'll call, we have non-public, right?
Yep.
Um so I just wanna address real quick for Liza, uh we're gonna do non-public and do personnel, and then I can come out and grab you, okay? For, because you've waited.
Did we? Can can I ask a question though on the donations that came across us from the Legion and the Lions Club for our school lunches before we leave? Um I would ask, I'm having the donations that are not in front of us yet, but please take a look at those lunches cuz I think there might have been a glitch in the system, to be honest with you.
It's already been addressed, yeah, that's already been addressed.
Uh-huh. So what is it, what happened, tell us.
I don't know that there's a glitch, but it's already been addressed, but.
In what way? Do you need the money still?
I spoke to Matt, Matt is speaking to the food service, Matt was speaking to the food service director.
Yeah, and what, you don't need the money or you don't, that's what I'm asking.
Well, we, so we'll, she, um so we're sending out a um an email to to all families, um asking them to, or no, asking them to check that email address and for if it's going into their spam.
Yeah, that's what it's going to do.
So that, so that's, so that's gonna go out because it's.
Yeah.
It's awful, and who would know, I mean, you think you get automatically taken out?
Well, and and honestly, thank you, because we didn't know until you know, you let us let us know.
Right.
Um so it's actually kind of fortuitous in that manner.
Yeah.
Um so hopefully that will resolve the that communication issue. Um that being said, um we do know that we'll still have a balance, we don't anticipate everyone to pay once they find that email cuz every, they they should be aware that there were balance regardless. Um but um we we certainly work with our administration and social workers to determine um what what families are in need, and then it gets applied at the end of the year. So we haven't even received the donation yet, but um once we do, we'll bring it to the board for approval. We'll hold it until the end of the year and see what the balances are at that point and apply it to those. We'll hold it until the end of the year and see what the balances are at that point and apply it to those.
So Matt, my my uh thing with that though is if we have free and reduced lunch and kids are eligible for free and reduced lunch. Everybody that isn't has to pay that bill, it shouldn't be a nonprofit paying that bill and I'm sorry, but that's my opinion.
But there's some people that don't qualify that still struggle though, like you can have a full-time job.
And I don't think they should have to. Yeah, but I think there has to be, but Lacy, I think there has to be some type of um form or threshold or something.
It's a struggle.
If somebody's making eighty thousand dollars a year with a two-person working in the house, they should not be relying upon nonprofits, that's all I'm saying.
So yeah, there there's a good there's a good number of families that that don't necessarily meet qualifications that that are that are struggling.
Cause they have a lot of people to serve.
And ultimately, that's that's up to the the um the organization to decide, they wanna make that donation. They understand um who they're donating to and they um and I I think it's it's wonderful.
Yeah, if they wanna help people whether they're in that bracket or not.
Our families are our families are struggling, so ultimately it's their decision. Um and we 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 certainly encourage that type of generosity, cause it's really um really wonderful. Cause we have families struggling, I mean, as as you, I think we all we all see.
Yeah.
So I just wanna go back on that summer legion number two, by the way. Um again, it's not about if somebody's struggling and they need to reach out to the lunch person and say, hey. I we can't pay this, we don't fall under the threshold of free and reduce, we need help. That's all just, you know, up to you to decide. But I just don't want those two groups to think they donated money to families that were um at a different level. I want them to understand this could be people making two hundred thousand a year that need your help. And because I don't think that that would fall under their guidelines and I'm just putting that out there, but you'll know more.
I'll. I will also note that there are families that that would qualify, but they they don't, um whether that's.
True.
They're they're for various personal reasons, um and tho- those would also be benefiting.
They don't fly. True. Sure. I'm very generous, every kid wants lunch for free.
I'm not wondering if your mind's getting slushed.
Yeah, different there always.
Yeah.
Every generation.
Every kid lunch for free.
Yeah, I wish.
Yeah.
I mean, the federal government really missed an opportunity after pandemic to just extend universal free lunches. And a a a fair number of states have implemented it, I I wish New Hampshire was one of them. Um because unfortunately, we have a pretty significant, you people would be surprised at the number, the percentage of of students. Statewide, nationwide that have food insecurity.
Yeah.
Um and that affects learning, cause it's very difficult to learn when you're 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 hungry and you're thinking of something else and you're.
I know. Yeah. So if we don't need that, if we don't need that money for the school, for our lunches particularly.
Um so it's really important.
I get hungry. We're getting hungry right now.
Now, if we don't need that money particularly for lunches, so to speak, in the end, maybe we could use it for snacks during the day. To help the kids that are at school that maybe don't have anything in their lunchbox for snacks or drinks. Cause I know there's been emails from the PTO asking to help fill their.
And that's a great idea, it's it's dependent on how they how they specify the donation.
Right.
If there are any available funds, what we would do is we'd go back to the nonprofit organization and ask them how we could either. Um refund them or they or we could ask them how they want to use those funds and we could make a suggestion like that.
Yeah.
Um but that's that we would absolutely look at all options.
Yeah. Keep us, just keep us on the know of it and we'll do what we can do.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you. And now we'll go into non-public session, I got RSA ninety one A colon three two.
C?
C. So then roll call.
At six forty five P M.
Roll. Yeah.
And who's making the motion?
Lacy.
I am, see.
That was good. We got a lot done and hopefully we'll have a fresh start the next time around.
Yeah.
All right, we're back on who's gonna make a motion. I'll make the motion. We come on a known public at seven thirty two. Is that right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's what my desk does.
I have it right here. I have a second?
I'll second round with the last as well.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. unanimous.
Hit it Jen.
Motion to adjourn. Second, Jen at seven thirty two?
Yep. Yep.
You've got it.